One of my commissioners.
Thirty, uh, let's go ahead and start the meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Easdale?
Here.
Commissioner Daniel?
Here.
Commissioner Yenkovitz?
Here.
Commissioner Robb?
Here.
Mayor Warren?
Here. If you want to participate in opening prayer and pledge allegiance, please stand.
Lord, we come to you and present ourselves in this meeting before you, and in the Book of James, you said if we lack wisdom to ask, so, Lord, we ask for wisdom for this governing body that would make the right choices. We ask for wisdom in this meeting. Lord, we ask for your wisdom to filter through the whole city, to department heads, and the city manager, and, Lord, that we would, we would have wisdom for the weeks to come. And then, Lord, we, we pray also you'd look with favor upon this city, and that your blessing would be here. Make our roads and streets and water pipes and everything last even longer than they would. And, Lord, we ask for your help with everything we do here. In Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right.
Hey, if you don't ask, it won't happen. Might as well ask. Extra link, water pipes and roads.
Is there any addition, relations to the agenda?
Uh, I have, go ahead. I just want to pull, on the consent agenda, the, the, just the Equal Opportunity and Accessibility Board, adding those two new members. I wanted to get a chance to, well, Anita, I don't need to do that. I wanted to get a chance to talk to Rags. I didn't know her, and I, at least to talk to her before we approve that, if that's okay.
Sure.
So I made that motion. We pulled that out of the consent agenda, and maybe move that even to next week, or next meeting.
I'll second that, but is there anything else that needs to be?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion second to pull the, the, the Equal Opportunity and Accessibility Advisory Board off until our next meeting. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I guess, uh...
Run for motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah.
I submit that we approve the consent agenda with the, the Equal Opportunity and Accessibility Advisory Board removed.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any other discussion? Now, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, there's no awards or proclamations. Is there's anything requisition of visitors, or? Okay. Consent has been approved. No old business. Uh, new business?
Consider a resolution creating the 2019 Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and authorizing said committee to evaluate our Kansas City citizen suggestions for projects.
Uh, on this, uh, we have highlighted in the packet the individuals, uh, that have expressed interest in being a part of this program, uh, but we also have highlighted as far as citizens who'd participate. We have Paisley Howerton, Andrew Patton, Ryan Soule, Nancy Holman, Melinda Cushionberry, Gary Hale, and John Sturd, um, for appointment to the CIP committee.
I'm sorry, could you read the names one more time?
Paisley Howerton, Andy, Andrew Patton, Ryan Soule, Nancy Holman, Melinda Cushionberry, Gary Hale, and John Sturd.
No, I don't. I know all but one person that I think that'll all be good people that'd be on that committee.
And we also need to approve a resolution creating that, uh, committee for 2019.
Run that by one more time.
We have to, um, pass a resolution which creates the 2019 CIP Planning Committee.
Okay.
Well, so first we make the resolution, and then we vote on the members?
That's correct, sir.
Well, I move that we auth- we authorize a resolution creating the 2019 Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and authorize said committee to evaluate our Kansas City citizen suggestions for projects.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any other discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
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 And we've got A, or A part?
Ratify Mayor Warren's appointments to the 2019 Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
I so move that we approve Jay War- Mayor Jay Warren's appointments to 2019 Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
I second it.
All right, it's been moved in second. Uh, is there any other discussion on it? If not, uh, voice vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Number two?
Consider acceptance of the moderate income housing grant for Compass Point addition.
This is really a two-part, number two and number three kind of go hand in hand. Uh, the moderate income housing grant, we received that, uh, through a competitive process with, uh, Kansas Corporation Commission, or Kansas Housing Corporation. Um, and that is for a $400,000 grant, which will be utilized for, uh, utility improvements and infrastructure. And so, we are going to earmark that $400,000 for streets. And within those resolutions, you'll see the cost of those, um, improvements, and then also the cost share for those improvements. Uh, so, just skipping ahead a little bit, uh, we have, uh, the sewer, which is the internal sewer portion. Uh, that's a hundred percent going to be assessed towards those properties. Uh, all the street, um, pavement is going to be 400 of the 500 and some thousand dollars will actually, um, be, uh, through that grant, so it'll only leave a hundred and some thousand, uh, remaining for the paving portion. Uh, the, uh, water distribution will be assessed towards the prop- the 54 properties. And then, uh, on D, the off-site sewer, we're actually, uh, it, it's to the city at large's benefit, and also to the development's benefit. So, on the off-site sewer, recommending a 50-50 split, and so, they pay for 50% of them, of the improvement, and the city pick up the other 50% of the improvement for the, um, sewer extension.
It's, uh, streets, is it a hundred thousand? That gonna be enough on the streets?
Uh, well, it's, it's, it's actually 500 and, um, let me skip ahead to that one.
Twenty-seven.
Five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, uh, is actually the total cost. For that.
And the streets part will not be assessed to the property?
It will be. It'll be, um, the 500,000 minus the 400,000. So, only 127,000.
Oh, I'm, I'm with you.
Will actually be assessed towards that property.
I'm with you.
Which is a huge cost savings for those lots.
Yeah, I'm with you. And then, the, the off-site sewer is 50-50. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct. So, everything that's not on the property. Uh, the reason for that is we actually had initially the sewer, um, being ran through a lift station. Lift stations are very expensive and very maintenance-driven, and so, uh, it would have been a very high cost to us long-term. Also, it would have put, um, an enormous amount of pressure on that existing sewer line, um, on, off of, uh, Eighth Street, that's to the east of Eighth Street. So, this alleviates a couple of problems. We don't have to maintain that lift station, because we can do gravity sewer. And secondly, we don't have that pressure being added to that Eighth Street sewer line, so that's why the 50% share.
With the 50-50, then it'll be, we pay half, then the other half is assessed to each of the individual property?
That is correct.
Okay. So, our, so really, that's our only out of, out of our general fund portion is the half of that sewer part, correct?
Now, the general fund actually, all this, these will all be taken out of our utility funds, except for the street portion, which will be out of general fund.
But they're gonna, that'll be all reimbursed. So, the only thing that won't be reimbursed, then, is what I'm saying, is the half of the sewer.
That's correct.
Sewer line. Or won't be, yeah, we won't be able to assess that.
That's correct.
And how much was that? I saw it in here, and now I moved around and don't see it.
Done with the hundred.
The half of the sewer, the seventy?
The off-site sewer, seventy-one thousand, six hundred eighty-seven, a hundred and fifty cents.
And that's charged against the sewer fund?
That's correct.
Okay. Do, and do we have the money?
Well, yes. Yeah.
And still enough to do the repairs needed to the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes, sir.
How much is in that fund right now, Nick? Do you have it all?
See if it's in the packet. Not in this packet, it's in the last. I believe we had, last time I checked, three and a half million?
Yeah, I was thinking.
Four million?
Okay.
Well, well, on number two, I, I move we accept the moderate income housing grant for Compass Point addition.
I'll second that. Is there any other discussion on number two? If not, it's a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three?
Number three has four parts. First one is Compass Point Addition Special Assessment Resolution A. Consider a resolution finding the advisability and necessity for constructing and installing a lateral sanitary to serve Compass Point Addition.
And this is the one we're talking about, seventy-one thousand each?
No, this is the onsite sewers.
Onsite sewer.
This is 205,700 dollars for the onsite sewer.
Okay, Nick, now, that sewer line, you, where's it gonna be tied into? I mean?
That sewer line will actually, uh, go back to Forest Glen subdivision. Uh, will actually come directly south off of that property, and will tie in. Uh, there's two roads that run to the north off Forest Glen. It'll be the one that's on the east end, uh, and which will be in between, uh, two properties on a road that's already planted.
And there won't be a problem joining that one with their sewer line? I mean, as far as?
No, it, it, it's, it, the fall, the, everything looks to be in pretty good shape for that.
Okay.
And then, I guess our, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
That, that line that, uh, from the Compass Point Addition to that line, do we have to go through any property, or is it our right of way? Yeah, we, we, it's property owned by ACI. But ACI potentially would get some benefit from that line, um, if they ever do, uh, Forest Glen Part Two. And so, they'll be able to potentially sta- tap into that sewer line with their services.
So, our risk is that we build the infrastructure and nobody comes?
That's correct.
So, what is the, so we, so far, we just authorized accepting money. Now, we're authorizing the spending of so, of said money plus some. So, what's the total cost to the city before we assess it to the properties? I didn't add those up. One twenty-seven, plus one twenty-four, two fifty, plus one twenty-five. Came up with roughly 400,000, then the grant of 400.
Sure. I think that's, was? It's 528,000.
Okay.
Of which, um, about 276,000 will come from the sewer fund, 127,000 will come from the water fund, and 124,000 will be through the general fund.
Well, we know that that level of housing is needed.
Correct. It's something that we've been working on with Cali First and...
I have a hard time thinking it won't, it's unless, you know, unless the builder backs out, the developer.
Well, if the vendor backs out, we can, um, work on getting those properties back in the city's hands.
Sure, and then, okay, so, I, I'll move we adopt 3A, a resolution finding the advisability and necessity for constructing and installing a lateral sanitary sewer, including necessary sewer mains and apparatuses to serve Compass Point Addition.
Second.
Before you vote, we do have Don Edwards here, um, who is the developer for the site. If you'd like to visit with him. We also have the builder and the engineer for the project.
Well, it's, yeah, it's been moving second, uh, so, now we're in the discussion, so if you guys want to come up and say something before we vote?
Real, we're very happy to be at this point. It's, uh, I think the first time I was in Nick's office to talk about housing down here was four years ago.
Yeah.
And so, um...
And we're happy to be at this point, too.
Yes.
Thank you.
As, uh, went through, went through a lot of iterations, but I have to say, I've never worked with a, a more pleasant group of people to, uh, to work with, uh, and a more motivated group of people from the industries here in town to get some housing. I guess, uh, the Creekstone folks are bussing people from Wichita, so it'd be nice to get something in there. Um, I really want to thank TJ, uh, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Uh, my, the, our builder, uh, you need to, need to know that, um, he's cutting his normal profit margin, uh, almost in half, uh, to ke- keep things under the, the, the level that we need to be to support the demographic that we want in this house. Um, we think we've got a, a good game plan set up for it. Um, as much, um, help as we can get getting the word out that the properties are here. I would like to say a little bit about how we are going to try to help the people that need this housing get their housing. Uh, one thing that's, that is nice here is that the entire county, in Cali County, is eligible for USDA, um, Department of Agriculture Housing Development Loans. That means that anybody that buys one of these will be able to do so without any down payment whatsoever. Um, the fact that we got the, uh, the grant is gonna cut the, it worked out to like $6,000.
Yeah, six to seven thousand.
Uh, $6,000 specials on a brand-new, uh, house is pretty much unheard of, and the, the work that went into that, I really appreciate all the help that we got with that. That's gonna, that's gonna be tremendous. And then, um, basically, other than that, um, we just need buyers. So, if anybody needs a house, send them our work.
Ha- has, uh, Creekstone, uh, said anything to you about how many of these employees they think will be moving into those houses? Do they think?
Um, when we talked to, to, what's Ray's last name?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five already?
Yeah, he's, they're looking at their mid-level managers, uh, people that don't know, the shifts supervisors on different lines, people that'll be making forty-five, fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, and they're having a heck of a time. Um, the hot, uh, the, uh, director of the hospital tells me that, uh, he has lost at least three employees because he couldn't get housing for them, and he thinks that they'll be able to, to take some of those. I got similar, um, uh, information from the school district that trying to hire teachers from out of the area has been a problem because of lack of adequate housing. So, we feel pretty good that we should get them sold and get them sold pretty quickly. Uh, and again, um, if I could look TJ's horn a little bit, um, what was it, 45 houses he built on, uh, Forty-Fifth Street in a year? So, he has the capability.
And where was this at?
Yeah, it's, uh, on it, at Woodland, uh, no.
Rock, where they, where they live in twenty-nine, sorry, Forty-Fifth and, and Webb, Wichita. And, uh, it's very similar houses, well-built, and they sold quickly, they're attractive, and, uh, we think it'll be a good, a nice addition to the community.
What about the people that's on down? I mean, not the, the, you know, they, they need housing, too. How are we gonna do this?
Well, two things are, it should help alleviate some of that problem. Um, what we looked at was a household with two people working, making between fifteen and 20 dollars a ton. They will qualify as long as we can keep the cost of the house below 150. And that takes some effort, believe me. Uh, it's normal build-out costs is like 120 dollars a square foot anymore. But by keeping the design similar, uh, cutting the lot size, TJ cutting his profit, me cutting my profit, we, we feel pretty confident we'll be under 150,000. So, two people, 15 dollars an hour, uh, with good credit, that's gonna be the trick, should be able to qualify for this house. And that was our goal all along, was, um, not to build, there's plenty of people building in, in the upper lot, but for the community to grow and to support the industries that are here, we had to pretty much put a limit on the cost of the, the monthly cost of the house, regardless of the size of anything else. We really couldn't build much over a thousand dollars a month, otherwise, we'd push it out of their reach, and, and we end up giving the city back a bunch of lots.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want that on the record.
Yeah.
So, I think, based on conversations with just about every company in town, uh, we feel like we should be able to, to get things moving very quickly.
And you're gonna start out with 25 at one time, or?
Yeah, doesn't it, TJ?
Well, I think we can go with the first one as a model, and then we'll talk, so that, that the feedback is, and then we can start ten times.
Okay.
The, uh, Creekstone has offered to buy that first one, just to, you know, just to get something on the site that their people can look at, and that's, that's really gonna be helpful. That's what I meant by this community, uh, not just the governmental agencies, but the community as a whole. Um, you should be very proud of them, because they, I haven't seen this kind of interest in developing something for the community as, as much as I've seen here with the industries in town. The fact that they're staying with you without the housing already here says a lot about this thing.
I know the local banks have, uh, approached me in regards to Compass Point, too, and they'd be willing to potentially cut some of their costs in order to help facilitate, um, the construction of these homes. It, so it's really, everyone's gonna have to give a little, there's a little bit of risk for everyone involved, it really is. Um, but it's definitely something that we've, we've heard time and time again, almost every meeting we go to in Cali First, is we gotta do something about housing, gotta do something about housing. And I think this is our, a, a good step between this and the Lakeview Estates, uh, which is down south of Sixth Street, Veterans Lake. Um, they're gonna take care of a tremendous amount of housing, sort of, that we have, which could free up other existing houses in town.
That's the point I was gonna get to, is, is if we can move 54 people out of substandard housing, that housing then becomes available for the people that are in. So, that's, that's what we're hoping to get, is a multiplier effect of at least one to one, and maybe one, one and a half.
I can't see why that's not gonna work. You know, there's too many, too much community support in this whole project, and usually, those things are always good.
What, what, what kind of timeframe would it, is it gonna take for the 10? I know we've got to do the street and sewers first, but once that's done, what kind of timeframe is it before?
The first 10.
The first 10 can be built?
Seven months, five months.
Five months? Okay.
We're hoping that within, um, because of some of the things that KHRC, Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, um, wanted us to do, we're hoping that in less than 24 months, we're completely built out.
Okay.
Realistically, I'd say five to 10 years. That's gonna be my realistic approach.
But still, within a year, there's at least 10 homes.
But, yes.
Develop.
Which is great.
Yeah, within a year, 10 homes, that's.
Yeah, for 10 homes, at five months, that's pretty good.
Actually, I would plan to go to 25 in the first year.
Twenty-five in the first year?
Twenty-five in the first year.
Which will be wonderful.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah, that's great.
All right.
Well, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I think we'll get our support.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the city, and, uh, I was, uh, over the last four years, grown to really like it.
Well, hopefully, you stay for a long time.
Build this out in 24 months, and we'll get working on something else.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if the commission, and I know the commission doesn't realize this, but actually, um, when we, Don and I first started working on this, we looked at every single imaginable way to try to keep these homes down low enough. We looked at Skyline Homes and doing a subdivision with Skyline Homes, manufacturer. We couldn't get the cost where we needed them to be. Um, we looked at infill housing, it just wasn't, wasn't there. Uh, we looked at, um, taking, uh, substandard housing and flipping it and trying to get it where we could put it back on the market, and got way backwards on that, unfortunately. So, this was actually the best approach, and we demonstrated all those to the KHRC and showed them that we've already taken those steps, and we had the housing study that was done by Cali First. So, all those different components really came into play to get this grant.
Okay, we're on, uh, three, on A, and we've got a motion and a second. And, uh, is there any other discussion on that particular item? If not, it's a voice vote. Voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Tracy, consider a resolution finding the advisability and necessity for constructing and installing a pavement on 10th and 11th and Compass Point Drive to serve Compass Point Addition.
So moved. Our move we result, we, uh, we consider a resolution finding the advisability and necessity for constructing and installing pavement on 10th and 11th, uh, and Compass Point Drive with drainage to serve Compass Point Addition.
Second that? Okay, it's been moved in second. Any other discussion? If not, it's a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Tracy, consider a resolution finding the advisability and necessity for constructing and installing a water distribution system to serve Compass Point Addition.
I so move that we approve, or consider a resolution finding the advisability and necessity for constructing and installing water distribution system, including necessary water mains, pipes, valves, hydrants, and appurtenances for Compass Point.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any other discussion? If not, it's a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution finding the advisability and necessity for constructing and installing a lateral sanitary sewer off-site to serve Compass Point Addition.
Nick, on that, uh, sewer line, that, that, what size is that gonna be in? 10, 12 inch, or?
I think it's eight inch, I believe. Eight inch sewer.
Eight inch? Okay.
Okay, ex- explain to me what, what, when you're doing off-site, is that off the property?
Off properties.
Okay.
That's correct. Not in the Compass Point Addition.
But, that, what you were talking about, going south out of, uh?
Out of the Compass Point Addition and connecting with the Forest Glen Addition.
Maybe to our city industries property.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Which think it'd benefit maybe down the road, if they develop.
Okay. Well, I shall move that, uh, we consider a resolution finding the advisability and necessity for constructing and installing a lateral sanitary sewer, including necessary sewer remains and appurtenances off-site and appurtenances to serve Compass Point.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Uh, I got a question. Uh, on that sewer line, will there be a tap-in, where, say, our city industry can tap in at some point in time, or at least a tap-in?
No, that's the way. It's designed so they can tap in later on. Um, and it'll actually be able to service and be extended to, uh, for the benefit of that Forest Glen Second Addition.
Which is just the, just north of Forest Glen.
That's correct. And it's already been platted and, and pretty much designed. It's just hasn't been actually put in.
This may help them get somebody interested.
It may, may help them get started.
Now, you know.
And Forest Glen, though, targets a little bit higher.
Correct.
Yeah, you home.
Yeah, the, the homes in that area are anywhere from.
Two fifty or something?
Well, they're about 175 to about 250 is, is what most of those homes, when they're originally constructed.
Right, yeah.
The, the range they were in.
All right.
All right, it's, uh, been moved in second. Uh, any other discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, and thank you.
Thank you for considering our Kansas City.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, number four?
Consider a resolution allowing the city to file an application for an historic participation by grant for a national register nomination revise, revising the downtown commercial district.
Madam Commission, first of all, I want to make a small clarification. Uh, if you saw the packet before, it actually said the grant was for the survey, um, but we can change during our meeting tonight. Um, basically, the idea is, uh, we did this survey back in 2017, finished it up.
Um, basically, the idea is, uh, we did this survey back in two thousand seventeen, finished it up, um, in two thousand eighteen. We, we got a grant in the past to do that. Um, what, what we did was we looked at all the properties that are currently in the district, determined whether or not they contributed to the district and got a little more information on each of the properties that, that are already in the district. Then we also, at the same time, looked at some of the neighboring properties that are not actually in it, um, but could potentially be eligible. So we, we looked at those and we did find a number of properties that, that could be added to the district. And so what we do, oh, I guess there's some I should add too. Um, as part of that also, we looked at some of the churches that are kind of in the downtown area. Um, we're not gonna do that with this particular grant, um, just because the cost is too high to do that at the same time. Um, what, what this grant proposes would be to fund, um, a consultant to come in and actually write the nomination that's required. It's a fairly, fairly difficult process and requires a lot of research, um, to get it all done, so that's why we need a consultant to do that. Basically, there is thirteen properties that would be, that were recommended to be added, um, to the historic district. Um, part of those are, the big number of them are along, um, Summer Street and this first, this block here that we're in. And then also would include this building, which surprisingly was not included in the nineteen eighty-three survey when we did the last one.
And why wasn't it, I mean?
I don't know, um, it, it wasn't, see, it was nineteen nineteen when this building was built and so eighty-three within what's six, sixties, sixty-year range. Um, so maybe they just felt it was old enough, it was eligible, cause it just has to be fifty. But now we're up to a hundred years, um, so definitely more significant at this point. And, and the good thing about being in the district, um, is that you're now eligible for tax credits, which in the case of the city, we can sell them on the open market. Um, we're also eligible for some of the grants to first, those are really for a larger project, um, like a full-scale renovation of the building. Uh, so tax credits have been more likely, tax credits are also, uh, a little more user-friendly. You can use them for stuff like, uh, mechanical systems in the building, you know, electrical, electric, stuff like that. So it doesn't have to just be for projects that are directly historic preservation-related because the idea is that you're still preserving a building that's a historic resource. So it's, there's more than just those, you know, tuck point, brick or whatever, you can do all sorts of different things with it.
Yeah, I see my explaining a tax credit, cause some of the probably probably don't understand what that is, I mean, the theory of it.
Basically, a portion of the cost of the project can be, um, deducted from your, or not deducted, uses the income tax credit for the state. There's also federal tax credits where it works basically the same way, where you can get a percentage of the project as a tax credit for your federal tax. Um, you do have to be for the federal, you have to be a for-profit business, um, in order to qualify for that, so that would work for ci- city, for city hall. So was, I think I explained it, um, but yeah, that's, that's basically how the tax credits work. And then, and then for people like, uh, the city or other nonprofit, any, actually anybody, can actually sell the tax credit to another entity, financial institution, maybe a wealthy taxpayer to, um, now, it's not a hundred percent generally, it's a slight drop that you'll experience, but it's still pretty good, probably at least eighty or ninety percent of every dollar.
Yeah, that's what the Burford did on theirs, the tax credit, and that was a wonderful relationship with the Burford Theater, so it does work.
Uh, and part of this, I didn't mention this yet, um, the property owners that would be added, they do have to consent to it. Um, it has to be the majority of the property owners that need to consent to it. Um, the Historic Preservation Board proposed having a meeting, kind of an open house meeting, where we'll meet with the property owners who are affected, explain what the benefits of being in the district are, and then at the end of the meetings, pass them for their consent. As part of the resolution that I've prepared, I'll prepare for you tonight, um, we also are asking the city, the city commission, to consent to nomination of, of city hall. And then there are two other properties, um, the police department and Ben Givens Park. Um, those two properties don't contribute to the district, they won't get the benefit of the, uh, tax credits or financial mechanisms. Um, basically, on those, you have to have the district, it has to be contiguous. And in order to make it contiguous, those two properties have to be included to make, make the line straight. That's one of the requirements that you'll see from the National Register, they'll require this.
I got a question, what it, on some of these parties that you're gonna have a meeting with and see if they wanna participate, what happens out of those twelve par- properties, uh, five of them don't, don't wanna do it and the other ones do, can you separate it or, or is it all have to do it?
If, as long as the majority of that.
Okay. It's a majority, okay.
I believe it's prop, actual property owners, so it's, if there's twelve individual property owners, then that, I would.
But even if the ones that don't participate, there's nothing, I mean, and you do it, I mean, there's, there's nothing that's gonna hurt them from doing whatever they wanna do in their properties.
They're not required to do.
Well, they are required from then on to buy wooden windows that cost ten times as much.
They would be. They would be subject to the guidelines, that's correct.
And we've got away from, we've got away from the wood windows.
And that's, that's why we have such a different. But that's why, yeah, but if you look at Taylor Drug, I mean, Colin had to be here for like four hours of his time. Plus then the builder had to spend an extra three months on the project to get it approved. And that's time and money that, I don't know who paid for it, but I guess it just, the building owner on a forty thousand dollar building spent that much, extra, extra thousands of dollars in labor just to get windows approved that were then vinyl and then they still had to pay for the windows. And, uh, so that's, that is the cumbersome, I, I'm the, I'm the anti-historical district guy up here, cause I, I even, cause my, cause my building's in it and I hate it. Cause you, your, your hands are tied. And that's why we had to do a special window, uh, we had to, we had to vote against the historic commission to get windows on the antique mall. Cause, uh.
You can still do that.
Yeah, but it's just, it makes it so the business owners, it's much harder on those business owners that already have a building that is big enough that it should rent for a lot more, but maybe you can only get a few hundred dollars a month. By the time you pay, you get through five, six hundred dollars a month to pay for a storefront that's cost ten thousand. Then you have to pay for a storefront that costs thirty thousand to make it historically accurate.
And I don't argue that point, historic construction is, is more expensive than conventional construction, just because of the different requirements that's at work. Plus.
Plus then you have one building that's supposed to look art deco and one that's supposed to look turn of the century and it still looks bad.
It's, it's hard.
Cause the one that's art deco cannot change, it's look to look turn of the century, so everything looks, uh, looks appropriate for the, yeah. Anyway, I think our historic, our downtown district should look turn of the century, cause that was when our city was booming, but, and we can't do that, cause, uh, Graves can't change its look, Graves has to stay art deco or whatever that is.
Whatever the original construction.
Yeah.
Style was.
So, I, that's why I don't like it anyway, that's my, that's my two cents and, and I, and anyway. Especially this one, if there's thirteen and the city already puts three in, then each individual property owner doesn't have very much of a say. The only way I'd vote for this is if the city voted no on their properties.
I, don't quote me on this for sure, but I think the city might only add one vote. I need to double check that.
Yeah, but then the property owners would be in charge, not us, cause otherwise we're getting double votes.
No, and I, I think that's what she said when I talked to the coordinator here, that the city really only gets one vote.
Vote.
And then each of the other owners would have one vote, cause it's, it's.
So if you have a, an owner who owns more than one building, they only get one vote?
Yeah, in that case, that's, they would work that way for them, I don't.
And I've talked to several business owners too, and they're, they're very much against doing any more historical stuff. They just, they're just tired of it, just the rules, the regulations, the formalities, the expense, so, yeah.
And I, yeah, I guess I just, I mean, it worked for, great for the Burford, cause that's such a big project, but most of the, our rest of the buildings don't have that kind of.
Well, they had, they had problems too, you know, I mean, they had to, it costs a little more, but you know, that was the only way we could get it done, this was tax credits and stuff and it depends, you know, what you're trying to do.
But you, but you're also recapturing something that was, that was there.
Right. Yeah, for the nineteen twenties, yeah.
So where Graves doesn't have that necessity or.
Yeah, I understand, it's.
The other buildings downtown.
I understand.
You were going for a particular look and you got it, yeah.
Yeah.
This, this grant, or the, is it just for those new businesses? They're the only ones that can apply for money in this grant, or is?
Anybody on the, be like, in the historic district.
On that list? Okay.
And how, how do they apply for those tax credits, I guess that's another thing, maybe, maybe people don't know.
They apply through the, through the Kansas State Historical Society, I'm more than happy to help, uh, people get started on that process and direct them to the right place to, to, or to, and quite a bit touch with the right people.
So even for roof, roofing or, uh, heating, you said, and all that kinda stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, those, those kinda things are generally eligible.
How, how, how long ago could the work have been?
Well, no, we have one business right now.
Retro, retroactive.
Retroactive, no, okay. Can't be completed yet.
Has a roof that looks.
Maybe I might not be so against it, but I have to go back in time.
Unfortunately. Does a roof that's, needs to be fixed, if they request funds through the grant, does it have to be original? If it's not seen? Or is, is that pretty?
Generally, that's.
Has to go back, yeah.
It needs to be, if, if it's been, if it's been modified significantly, then it needs to be reverted back to. And not necessarily in historic or else, cause obviously they're still gonna, they wanna use the more modern, uh, technology. So, don't let that bother you, but, um, the overall look that you can see from the ground is what they can still, yeah.
Well, most of them have the high, high roofs.
They're flat, flat roofs.
Yeah.
And that's, the Burford's the same way and they did, they put it back just like it was, I mean, you know, before, so. The only thing, it was, it was inside, you know, the, the inside part of, we, they had to go back, that was a really strict part of that, you know? Which we wanted to, you know, be that way too, you know, uh, so, but it was more costly.
That would, the Burford is a little unique.
Yeah.
Um, for most of the commercial businesses downtown, the interior is not. Uh, did you think, they anchored places like the banks, perhaps would, would have some extra things they need to worry about. But most of the smaller businesses would, that's mostly the storefront that you're dealing with.
So we need two motions?
It's just one resolution.
Yeah, and all this resolution is doing is just the people that's already in the district, they can be able to apply for the.
No, it's for adding new, this is the, they add thirteen.
For adding.
Yeah, if they're already in the district, nothing's gonna change.
Okay.
It's the thirteen or twelve new ones.
But they wanna add, yeah, they wanna add new ones to make the district bigger.
Have you talked to those people, I mean?
No, that's what we'll do next, is, is actually have the competition.
So we're not actually voting to say they have to do it?
So they, they still have the choice, this, this, what the idea here is, is that you, um, give me your support to apply for the grant
and then also consent to add the city properties, uh, for.
Can, would it cost more if you, if you did it, two or three properties at a time?
Yeah, cause there's the, there's that base cost that it's all in charge of it.
Cause with thirteen, then that, that's, becomes where you get, you know, seven like it, five hate it, and you've tied five p, five owners, you've, you've damaged that well.
You're stuck. Mm-hmm.
But I think if it comes to that, we might be able to change, exact, I don't know, I'll have to see what happens.
I know you said the lines, the lines need to be contiguous, so.
And he said needs to be continuous.
Yes.
So it couldn't.
But it also would hamper us, for people buying a new, you know, coming in, they'd be stuck with those regulations.
So.
Yes, that doesn't, once you're on the registry, you're all the way.
And this would add the, you're saying like the Osage down to the Corner Bank or which properties?
Osage is already in it.
The Osage is in it, uh, cause you said this property.
This, I'm talking about this one here. Like, uh, Legladders, uh, Shore Walters, uh, Security First, that's, that part of the block.
And then the city and Ben Givens and the.
And there's a, there's a couple other outliers that are further south up there, that would be able to, to make up for it.
With the, with the Corner Bank, R C B that was Corner Bank?
That one is not, cause like, it was not considered eligible and it's needed.
Cause branding.
It's, it's, it's branded either.
Yeah, brand. They never would have been able to do that.
It, it wasn't an old building long, long time ago when it was, savings alone, I mean, it wasn't an old style.
It was an old building.
What, what kind of funds are possible with, if this is, if we do this, that these businesses can get if they wanna redo their windows and stuff, I mean, are the funds limited to five or ten percent of the cost, or is it more than that?
You guys know how much the tax credit, is that a good?
I mean, well, i- if, if to fix their roof costs eighty thousand dollars. With the grant or reply for this, how much would they be eligible for? Are they eligible for half? And this, or can you tell?
I don't know, I can't totally quote you on that, but I'm sure there's a cap.
Yeah.
Like a eighty thousand dollar job maybe, personally, there are a lot of levels of that in it. Um, but, um, most of the smaller projects are not gonna be, if you're, if you're doing a project that's of that scope, then that's probably the opportunity to go back for more experience.
Okay, somebody wants to do two windows on a building? But then we have money for one? Then what happens then?
Have to go to the pen down there.
On, makeup.
On the registry.
On the register?
Not on the registry, on the head.
Maybe you save some more money, right?
Well, I mean, I mean, I can understand that the rules are terrible, cause I've gone through this with the library, cause it's on there and we can't, the library can't afford the windows, cause they're just a strange style window.
That's a better property you can't.
So.
You can, you can break a project into phases, I don't know about doing two windows, but like the library for instance could do one, one wall, I don't know.
Okay, so if, if, and then if, down the road, a couple of years? Or does it, do you have to continually do?
Do you have to continue to get the grades?
Like, once you get the front done, then you have to do the back and?
You'd add these separate projects if you did it like that, so, I don't know that you'd never have to, they're not gonna require you to do all four walls if you can't afford it.
Okay, so.
It's.
They probably tell you to focus on the one that's most visible, probably like the front.
Visible. Yeah.
Is this, does this have to be done tonight, I mean, to, I mean, it's, it's to be postponed for a little bit for more discussion?
Well, it says.
It can.
I, I, I'm just not ready and I don't think the commission, I just listened to everybody, uh, we're all kinda confused about it and I, I can, I know it's helped the Burford, you know, that's one example, but that's, that example, it probably by itself, you know, you take that out, you know, and then other people's having problems type thing. But I'm not sure we're ready to do anything, cause we're just, you know.
It says March twenty-ninth is fine.
March twenty-ninth, the, the drop dead deadline has returned. So yes, that's, and honestly, that's part of the reason I wanted to bring it to you now, is to give you an opportunity to do that.
One more question that I'll need to, when I'm thinking about, so you mentioned the churches, so let's just say that the Central Christian, that's probably could qualify. They wanted to be in it, even though we're not included, what it, how long does it take, or if they, say they, you know, doing, wanted to do a big project like the Burford and do some, although the building, they, they've kept it up nicely, so I don't think they have that kind of a big project, but let's say they did. How long would it take them to get in and, in order to be able to comply for those credits?
It's certainly a process, because what they would have to do is individually nominate themselves, because without, in a district, you can be, you're gonna have to do it that way. Um, which is a little more time-consuming, you know, they're gonna go over more specifics of the property to get it individualized, because it has to stand on its own. So it can't use any other properties to make it more historic, so it's gonna be a little bit more difficult.
Unless city hall we're already in.
Yeah, well, if we were to include this with this grant, city hall would have, would be in the district, so they wouldn't have to do it in, we wouldn't have to do it in. Yeah, well, if we were to include this with this grant, City Hall would have, would be in the district, so they wouldn't have to do it in, we wouldn't have to do it in.
So, when you say City Hall, does that include all the buildings here to the north?
This proposal doesn't go all the way, doesn't include all the parking lot, but it does include the whole structure.
Does, the old fire department?
Yeah.
We don't have to build a new fire department too.
We need one.
Didn't we change some of the si, didn't we change some of the sizes of the windows when we reviewed the?
No, actually, those are all ridged ones, they actually went back with the tall style window that would have met, uh, the requirements.
Thanks, Josh. At least I'm, I'm finished, I don't want anyone else.
Need the motion to the table?
Yeah, this.
For further discussion?
Yeah, for discussion, probably ought to have it on a workstation too, some point between now and March, just couldn't talk about it some more.
You, I shall move.
Okay.
Have we tabled the resolution number four?
I'll second that, is there any other discussion on it? All papers say aye, go, wait.
Go ahead and vote, I, I don't want to say.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Nay.
You don't wanna table it?
I'd rather just take it over, but it's tabled anyway, I just wanna, just be done with it.
Brandon Everie, nineteen oh, I, I'd just like to add to that too, I mean, I, I'm right there with you guys, but just from a transparency standpoint. If I, if I owned a business in one of these little areas, and wasn't communicated to us, and you guys voted on that, or voted for something along with it. That's, that's a little scary, I mean, at least common courtesy and say, hey, we're gonna be talking about your business tonight and possibly vote you into a district. Or the potential to vote you into a district, I mean, it, we really ought to notify these folks before we make decisions like that. At least give them an opportunity to come in here and say, hey. So, just maybe do that.
Invite our work session.
This is actually just to apply for a grant to do that process.
Once the ball's rolling.
Yeah.
It's kinda sometimes too late when you already got.
Once you say, oh, we got the grant.
In concrete, it's still common courtesy to know that you're talking about doing something to somebody's personal property, I mean, that's just gonna. I wouldn't want to be put in that situation, I'd, I'd immediately have a negative outlook on that.
Well, just to rest your fears, Mr. Everie, we would never do that. I think I can speak for all of us, we would never make the city businesses do something we thought they should do.
Wow, thank you.
I got, I got a question for Josh, uh, if, just say that we went ahead and approved. To file an application for a grant, what if it was never used? Or when we do that, does that mean that all those bills, businesses? In those thirteen or twelve new ones, whatever they are, they have to abide by? If we, if we go ahead and file an application, or is, does that, does that stop if they don't approve it?
Filing the application doesn't do anything, um, until the process is completed. And I kinda wanted to add something to, wanna kind of address one of Mr. Everie's concerns. I cannot apply for this grant officially, until I have proof that the property owners consent to it. I didn't, I should've said that earlier, um, but I, we have to actually prove that there is support for it, we can actually.
Okay. Yeah, I was kinda wondering, you know, approve to file an application, if that made, just started it, or just? Let's, lets them know that we're thinking about it. So, it might be a good idea if, like Mr. Everie said, that we can invite the businesses that are the new into that. What's, that.
District.
District, thank you. And get them, get their input into that.
I can, yeah, I can certainly do this meeting before, before you guys grant approval for it, if that's the desire, I can do that.
If, if you're gonna do that, why don't you have that done through the Historic Preservation, um, committee?
That's who it was gonna be.
And have them, pre-invite them and visit with them just.
Okay.
Before it comes back to the commission for the grant.
Alright.
That's what I have, that's what I get.
And, cause, a lot of them may not know.
So I'm just curious, so it would be, we're talking, you said Security First, that building? The Show Walters.
Leglider.
Leglider, that whole, those four properties there? And then any on the other side of Summit also, like on the Osage side, no?
There wasn't any that were eligible.
So those four, plus then three that are the city? And you said, though, there was thirteen?
Actually, on the other side of the street, they're already in it, I mean, phrase that.
All the way to the corner?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we can't do the, the RCB bank wouldn't be included, so then does it go south of Chestnut also?
The current district does. The current district goes all the way down to, um. First Innermark, I think, is the last one.
Well, that's on the, you've gone south, I'm, I'm headed, I thought you said we were headed north with it.
Did, that, let me back up.
Or are we going both directions on Summit with this grant application?
There's, it's this block, like I said, just on this side, because it was left out, and then there are a couple more buildings that are.
South of first?
Avenue is one, and in Washington, there's, there's a couple buildings on both ends that are gonna, that would be added to it.
On Fifth? Which, which building on Fifth?
Um, the, the newspaper was on it, um.
So the other side?
And, the library's already part of it, but the newspaper building is not?
Yeah, that would extend it, there was also the AT&T building that's on.
A, A Street.
A and.
River Street that is.
A in Washington.
Ada Adams.
Adams.
That was added, um, the building that the school district was to be in, was, was one of the ones to, that was one of the other. And on the south end, the only thing added was the townhouse.
What's the, what's the criteria for that?
The townhouse?
The townhouse?
What about the AC office building?
It's already in.
Okay.
So if, if this is approved though, then if somebody wants to redevelop where Townhouse is and buy it, they can't, it has to stay hotel forever?
Not necessarily.
They can't pull those, make a Home Depot out of it? I mean, really, seriously though, that couldn't happen.
The, the process would say, no, you can't demolish that building, that's not gonna.
Alright, I just, yeah, I just wonder that.
So the game plan is, they're gonna go, they're gonna be all invited to the historical board and discussion, and you're gonna bring it back to us?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
When's your next meeting? For the struggle?
This one, it might call a special one to.
Okay.
We might let Nick know, cause it might be, commissioners may wanna come and just listen.
Well, I, I'd like to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, he'll get hold of Nick, Nick can get hold of us whenever that meeting is, or.
Andrew.
Or Andrew will get, get, yeah, Andrew will get with us. Okay. Uh, I guess city updates?
Um, CWG water sewer application, we applied for the sleeve edition, we did not get the, um, grant.
And why not?
Well, and the scoring sheet on there, we actually scored low under total need. Um, we scored forty nine point five out of sixty possible points. If we would've scored point two six higher, or point two four higher, we would've got the grant.
How could we do that? I mean, if we apply it next time, what is it?
Well, the, the time before, all the projects that were, I believe, eighty and above were funded. And this time, it was eighty five and above were funded, so if we would've been in the last funding cycle, it's sleeve edition, we would've been awarded. Uh, it just, it, it does not make much sense, and unfortunately, total need is purely. What they want it to be, it's not anything that we, um, can tell our story. I mean, when you look at it, uh, it had the second highest LMI, uh, out of all the projects. At seventy five point eight percent LMI, um, the next.
What's the LMI?
A load of moderate income, so seventy five percent of people living there fall within that category. And you can see, there's several projects here above us that scored higher, fifty percent, sixty percent, and. And it just, we just don't, just didn't understand. Uh, I think we demonstrated need very well, at least point two four higher than what we did score.
When can you apply again?
Uh, next year. And we will, we'll apply again next year. Um, next item, um. Cali County Legislative Committee meeting, when is that?
Uh, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? Uh, we have city commission study session next fifteenth. And let's see, we'll be open for President's Day, we're not gonna be closed. Uh, I am giving the State of the City, um, address, uh, that is gonna be noon, February nineteenth, at the Brown Center. And so if you'd like to participate, just let, uh, myself or Andrew know, and we'll make sure you, we get you signed up for that.
Is that noon meeting?
It's at noon.
In the.
Brown, Brown Room. Yeah, in the right room, correct. So just let us know if you'd like to be there. Um, we are still working on South Central Kansas Medical Center on their bonds, and trying to get those redone, um. It's a slow process, but we're making effort, um, we're trying to get it where the hospitals' operations are. As detached and far away from the bonds as we possibly can. Unfortunately, that's very difficult with the way that the current hospital's set up, so. Uh, we're working on trying to see what we need to do, um. On that, and then, uh, the last item, which is actually a really, um, exciting thing, is. Uh, we received, uh, the hike bike, um, grant, uh, that we applied for several months ago. Um, this is the continuation, phase two of our hike bike trail. So we can actually complete the trail from Paris Park Pool, all the way back to the sports complex with this grant. Um, as you are all aware, we received, um, funds from West Star to help us with this project, and also Cali College. Uh, when we first got grants, uh, well, not grants, but, uh, funding from West Star, it is actually, the funding's for. Uh, right of way purchase, or easement purchase, uh, for their, uh, Paris Park, uh, transmission line project. And when we did that, we, uh, told them at the time that we were gonna apply for grants to try to offset some cost for the grant. Uh, and fortunately, we received actually more money than we anticipated in the grant. So what I have here is just a sheet to take a look at and pass one and go on. But the estimate on the hike bike trail is one million, one hundred fifty six thousand, three hundred and twenty three thousand. Um, KDOT's portion is eight hundred and forty thousand, ninety one dollars. Um, the city's match then, um, is three hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty two dollars. What I'm actually recommending is we have a contingency to round it up to four hundred thousand, to cover any potential costs that we have, so. Uh, four hundred thousand of those funds will actually be, not city funds, but those are West Star, Cali College, uh, for those, uh, for that project. Um, West Star's committed five hundred and thirty seven thousand, three hundred and ninety five dollars, Cali College, with the purchase of Carver Park, those eighty seven thousand dollars. If you subtract that four hundred thousand, which is what we have for the city management contingency, that leaves us remaining funds of two hundred and twenty four thousand, three hundred and ninety five. So what I'm actually recommending, um, the city look at doing, um, or thinking about doing, is, um. I really think number one, the city entrance signs, we should go ahead and start that process. To get new entrance signs to our community, I visited with a sign company, uh, and, uh, they gave me what a cost estimate would be for four entrances. And so this, uh, what we do here is we go for proposals and go through the Beautification Tree Advisory Board. And have them actually go through all the proposals and make a selection, and, and what we do is say, we have X amount of dollars for four entrance signs. You tell me what you can do for that, for that price, and just see what comes up from the different sign companies. Also, I talked with Tony Tapia, um, we have, half of our Christmas lights downtown were replaced and redone, we need to do the other half. But also, Tony's had issues with the angels and, and some of the other hanging, um, ornaments, but. I wanna, uh, at least budget some money towards replacement of those, uh, items. We are actually, uh, replacing all of our lights downtown, we did find an LED equivalent, which, so all of our post tops and all of our overheads. It's gonna be right around ten thousand, so that's already been purchased, and they're, we're gonna start installing those here before too long. And it's a warm white light, so it's, uh, like a soft white light bulbs, uh, they, I think it's thirty seven hundred K. Uh, which was one of the biggest issues that we had, is we had the really orangey ones, and then we had the really bright blue ones, and no one liked them. And that was actually the very first meeting that I was here, that I sat in on, um, I remember Roger Sparks being here and being upset about the blue lights. And so, we have a warm white, uh, light, which will be very natural to the downtown area. Other thing we talked about, and, and this is just thoughts, um, trees. Um, putting money aside for the trees, so, um, for Papa Walking Trail, Newman, uh, Park, which is the park on the south part of town. And then also, um, potentially setting up a, a program where maybe two or three thousand dollars is set aside. Where we can do a voucher program similar to the city of Newton, where if you wanna buy a pro, uh, a, an approved tree. Um, from, from our planting list, and put it on your property, um, then we potentially reimburse up to half of the cost of the tree. To try and encourage people to plant trees on their property. And then the final item on there, and it's something we really need to have a lot of discussion on, is the future of the Hogan. Do we want to look at redoing the Hogan, or do we want Chestnut Avenue to take the place of the Hogan and have the Northwest Community Center? Because it's one of those items that, you know, it's there now, it's built, it is a business. You know, they, it, it would be basically about the same size if we were to look at something with the Hogan, maybe a little bit smaller. Um, but, uh, just something we need to keep in mind and be thinking about, uh, in the future, but. Uh, we would have that opportunity potentially, but what I really want from the commission this evening, if they're okay with. Is at least approved for us to begin looking at the entrance signs, and allowing that Beautification Tree Advisory Board to start going after proposals for those. Entrance signs.
Do they have to be assigned each company, or can it be someone local that just has a talent?
Well, I, I think that's one of those things that, I know that we. You know.
Well, that's gonna worsen hikes, yeah.
Yeah, Kalin Taylor, I've talked to Kalin Taylor, and he, he does the artwork, um, for a lot of them, and I very spoke with him. One of the things I'd like to see is, and it's just my idea, it doesn't mean it's gonna go anywhere, but. We have the roundabout, and I know we've had incidences of traffic going through and so on and so forth, but, but. I think if you put structural ballards in there, that'll at least keep them from getting into the intersection. We talked about doing a limestone type, um, entrance sign there, and then actually, years ago, before I even got here, they were going to put Cherokee Strip Run. Statue similar to the one, uh, at Kansas Avenue with the Indian, and doing something like that, but. Uh, Kalin also has a piece of artwork that he's ready to go, and it's a bear with, with Cubs, which would be really neat on one of the entrance signs as well. But I think it's something that with that RFP process, the Beautification Advisory Board can, can actually probably reach out to Kalin and have him be a part of that process.
Trains everywhere.
Well, but they, yeah, but, with the BFK Street Advisory Board, honestly, they, they looked at different entrances, different styles of entrances. Like on the east end, as you're coming in on, uh, one sixty, uh, having it, one sixty six, having it be, um, uh, Etsanua related. Because that is the area for Etsanua, uh, potentially having down south be more, um, one of those river related.
Yeah, rivers and trails.
Rivers and trails, I mean, the other thing we can look at doing is a sign on the walking trail, or on the bridge overpass, like. You know, something, Welcome Mark City on there's something, but there's, it gives you a lot of options, and basically what you do is. This, the Beautification Street Advisory Board, it will help steer those sign companies and get different proposals.
Be interesting to see.
And the Beautification Advisory Board could make it local.
Oh, absolutely, mhm, yeah, well, you got Hay Sign Company here, local too, that, I mean, he's, definitely could put proposals there. Rob Carroll, absolutely.
Uh, limestone, okay, so, I mean.
I mean, there, I think there's some really neat stuff that can come out of it. Yeah, I mean, there, I think there's some really neat stuff that can come out of it.
Yeah, we could do a lot.
And you could put, go maybe one, you know, two different companies.
You could put, yeah.
Post trucks would be pretty.
Metal and limestone together, and a train.
What? Post trucks.
You could, you could do a lot of really neat stuff.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Really awesome, so if, if the commission's okay with it, we're gonna start down that process, and, and honestly, this, these could be done this summer still, if we get going down.
But they'd still need approval once they're.
Absolutely, once the, uh, once all the proposals are all done, once they have their final approval, then those contracts have to be brought to the commission for approval.
Camera, as a commission, we need a motion for, just have him go ahead and.
Well, I think he is asking for commission approval.
I, I don't have a problem.
Just to move forward with the process.
He's asking for consensus, not a motion.
Yeah.
I just want consensus that we can proceed.
Sure, thumbs up.
Cuz it's gonna take a lot of work on beautifications, um, and it's a lot of paperwork, it's gonna take several meetings.
Well, only that, that's gonna give them a nice thing that they're just not there, just talking, you know, that we're gonna give them, actually give them.
Right. It'll give them a good project, and the trees is the other thing too.
Yeah.
That's just both the same board, right?
Yeah, it is the same board.
Yeah, that's gonna give them some responsibility.
Pretty busy.
And honestly, they're gonna be brought into the hike bike trail discussion too, because, um, there is, we're potentially gonna be looking at lighting a portion of the trail as well, for safety reasons, and we'll, we may tie some artistic features in there as well, so, we're just, and in that process, we'll, we'll bring the agreement for engineering, um, at the next meeting, and, um, start the design process, and then construction will be in twenty twenty on the trail. Other than that, that is all I have.
I, I have a question, you know, the city entrance signs, uh, some citizens have contacted, several have, about the service organization signs that used to be on each entrance?
Mm-hmm.
Are they, does the city still have those?
Have them somewhere, I'll have to ask Tony, he would have them somewhere, just sit, sit and stock them.
Why would they be taken down?
Well, we had two, the entrance signs are broke.
Okay.
Yeah.
Want them blowed down.
Yeah.
So.
We just never did put them back there.
Yeah, they rotted, yeah, the entrance signs rotted, and, and, and unfortunately, they.
Oh, yeah.
Well, but if we're gonna do these new entrance signs.
Yeah, get, get those in, in with it.
Yeah, you're gonna have to probably look at separate area for those, just, um, cuz you won't want it to track from the, like, night sign.
I'm sure the beautification board will look at all options.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have a lot of responsibility there, who does?
The board does.
They do, yeah, which is good. Is there anything else good, good for the cause? No.
Go ahead. I'm gonna adjourn.
Second. All papers say aye?
Aye.